I'd like to call the meeting of the Waukegan City Council, April 2nd, 2012, to order. Roll call. Alderman Beedling.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Tempest.
Present.
Alderman May.
Present.
Alderman Valco.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Cunningham. Alderman Conkin.
Present.
Alderman Moiseo.
Present.
I'd also like to entertain a motion to seat a chairman pro temp.
Like to seat Chairman, or Alderman Rivera's chairman pro temp?
Second. All's in favor?
Aye.
Welcome, everyone, to tonight's council meeting. We already did our roll call. Yep. Why don't we stand up for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As all of you know, the mayor's had his surgery last week on his back, so hopefully he's doing well and recovering. Audience time. We have two that signed up for audience time.
Wally was first.
Three-minute limit?
Yes.
Okay, very well. So please, Mr. Segalski, Wally Segalski, could you come up, please? Can you state your name? Very well. Can you state your name and your address?
Wally Segalski, 320 South Greta, Waukegan, Illinois. Being that I'm on a short time period, I want to get right to the point. They have this Crime Stopper, both in, probably a couple thousand yards away from the city hall here. And I, when I, my question is, why is it only a $1,000 reward for information like that? And being that we have such an increase of crime in our community, in the city of Waukegan, I think it'd be advantageous for us to increase that to $3,000. Because I would say the people out on the streets that are looking for money, just like the people that are looking for money at Wall Street, greed comes a long way, but it would be to our advantage if they step forward, and I'm sure that'll entice them with that enhancement. Now, because I'm limited to my speaking time, I also want to compliment the chief police, Mr. Greathouse, for having that program where you have a, where you, where you have a policeman representing each ward. That's working out very good in my ward, in Alderman Tempest's ward. And speaking of that, and Mr. Tempest, and Mr. Ralph Rivera, I want to thank them for having their neighbor watch group meetings. Because also, that became very, the people have become very aware, and they're more, they're more in tune with the community and the residents. And I want to thank both them aldermen, and I'm sure maybe the other aldermen have, doing the same thing as well, but I just happen to be working directly with those two. And the third thing I'd like to say is, I don't know if you had it in the past, but it would be nice if we could get all the clergy, clergy in the Waukegan, be it Catholic, Protestant, the ministers, the priests, the rabbis, if, if we could contact them through the city to come to the city hall here, and come before us, and become, come before you as a council. And what I'm after is, they would be a big influence to talk to their flock. And what I'm saying is, if we could collectively come together as a community and have some solidarity with each other, because we need it at this point in time. And with that, I want to close, and thank you for listening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Segalski. We have Chris Roloff. Can you please state your name, also, Chris, and your address? Please, thank you.
Good evening, councilmen. My name is Chris Roloff. I am the president of the Patrolman's Union for the Police Department here in Waukegan. Address is 105 Northwest Street in Waukegan. Our, our members had a, a motion on the 21st of March for me to read a statement to you all, to the citizens. So I'd like to start out by first saying the union would like to express its support and appreciation to Alderman Valco for raising concerns shared by many Police Department employees. We fully support his willingness to have an open dialogue with the mayor and the chief regarding issues involving public safety, which have a major impact on operations and morale within the Police Department, and ultimately, on the police services that provide to the citizens of Waukegan. As the elected representative of the Police Department's Patrolman Union, we stand prepared and willing to meet with the city and city officials at any time to discuss matters relating to the operation of the Police Department. We understand Chief Greathouse is the department's leader, and we will continue to do our jobs as he has outlined for us. But the union body has some areas of concern, specifically ones that affect our officer safety and the service to the citizens. Again, I'd like to say thank you to Alderman Valco for his comments at a previous city council meeting to bring these concerns to the forefront. However, the union would like to seize this opportunity to work with the mayor and the chief to improve these issues and move forward. The union is asking the mayor to meet with us and any other Police Department union heads to sit down and discuss areas of concern, not to complain or make waves, but in our best efforts to improve the Police Department through morale, officer safety, and the most important thing, service to the citizens of this city. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Roloff. That is all for, for audience time. Our next item on the agenda are the minutes. I need a motion to approve the minutes of March 19th, 2012, regular meeting. I have a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed. Next item on the agenda, resolutions and proclamations and presentations. We have a proclamation from the, by the city of Waukegan to the YWCA Lake County 90th anniversary. Do we have anyone representing the YWCA here? If not, why don't we approve the, the proclamation? And we'll make sure that they get it. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So I need a motion to approve the proclamation. We have a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Lisa May. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proclamation is approved. Make sure that the proper people get that, Mr. Clerk. Next item is a presentation by Richard Lee from the Waukegan Public Library. Again, welcome, Richard Lee. The floor is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. My presentation is really short. It takes about four minutes. We have a very short YouTube, and I'm going to have to, uh, come up for me in a second. This is the, this is the second year for this program. It's called Bust a Bust. We built our early learning center downstairs. We, we realized that we didn't have any way to get a lot of the kids to the library. And so we found, it's more from the family foundation, they gave us $8,000 to help these kids to the library. Somehow, the, the video was posted on YouTube, and it's, if you're a fan of YouTube, it's great. They have 100, 150, maybe 1,000 views or something. This thing went viral. We have over 290,000 views of it, so people are watching it all over the world. And we're really proud of the program. It's, I want to work with it at any time, and other community for itself.
I want to tell you a little bit about our day. We have a very exciting day today. We're going to the Waukegan Public Library.
It started with one of our former interns, a kindergarten teacher in School District 60, and she was unable to secure the funding to bring her class on a field trip.
There is no budget for field trips. Our district was able, at one time, to support one field trip per classroom, but through the years, it has dissolved because of economics.
So Elizabeth sort of was thinking about that, and ran with it, and was able to get funding to allow for us to hire a bus company to bring kids to the library. And the idea of that grew into the formation of this Bust a Bust program.
With, you know, various types of jobs, and we do have a single parent population, sometimes it's difficult for parents to get their children to the library. So this is a phenomenal resource.
This was just a few short years ago. The previous superintendent was ready to eliminate all the libraries they had in all the elementary schools. They put books in hallways. They save their libraries, but for how long, we're not really sure. So anything the public library can do to the Waukegan public schools and help them out is why we're here.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
This was out of the comfort zone for our librarians to actually create curriculum and give it out to the children. And they really rose the occasion. I think they were really nervous for the first one, but they get so much energy from the children, and it's so rewarding that it went so well. And I think this exhibit will bring over 1,000 children to the library.
Are these the kind of rocks that you're going to find in your backyard?
No.
No, the water is what made these nice. You think they can charm them?
What works very well is the interactivity, the hands-on that the kids are able to do. The philosophy of getting kids to the library, to getting kids to a so-called third-place homeschool library is very important. There's a lot more things here than just books.
How many of you have a library card?
The energy of the kids is just absolutely wonderful. They're excited. They're excited to show what they know. I talked about library cards. I talked about library programs. I invited them to bring the whole family, explained to them we do have programs just for specific age groups.
Can you please take some of our pollution report on the top of this?
Add it to the Enviroscape. And so Patrick and I both do small groups, and we talk about the watershed, and we explain what it does. And then we have the kids actually, like, do the experiments with the board and things like that.
Would you want to eat fish that are in this lake now?
No.
And the teachers love doing it as well, so they get all excited about it, so.
A lot of our students, English isn't their first language, and so some of those more hands-on modeling is really helpful for them in terms of understanding.
We are going to make it rain. This is our rain machine, okay? It's really cool. I feel like I'm just one of the kids. Making them a part of it just, you know, enhances the experience, too. You know, I wanted to grab one, too, and, you know, go ahead and pollute the water.
Did you guys enjoy the time?
Yeah.
My parents talk about lakes, like in Lake Michigan. I would like to see more about the models.
Talking about what they found in the ocean and in the lake.
We look for independent funding outside our tax dollars to make these things happen. I look to foundations. I look for grants. I look for individual donors. The ones that give to us believe in us, and they believe we're making a difference.
I like what I saw, the jellyfish.
I loved everything.
I want to come back.
Bye-bye.
That's very, very good, Richard. You know, what, what's wonderful is that, how important it is to work and partner with our schools, and how it's really also promoting the, the Early Learning Center. I think that's very important, to start educating our children, you know, at the, at the early stages. And that's good to see. That's good to see. It's good to see that you're working on these grants as well, and getting private funding as well. And I'm, I'm hoping that that's going very well, so congratulations. Nice job. Are there any other questions that the aldermen have in regards to this presentation? Not? Thank you very much. Now we go to the committee reports and motions. First up is the, well, before we go into the committee reports, there are some changes that we'd like to do. We'd like to, if you look at the Item D, Judiciary Committee, Item D, which is the motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the county of Lake and the city of Waukegan regarding Lake County's Belvedere Road campus. We'd like to bring that up before the committee reports and motions.
I'd like to move your honor that we move Item D out of the Judiciary Committee to the committee reports, labor relations at this time.
Very well. We have a motion by Alderman Tempest, second by Alderman Newsom, and we have Lyle Staller, Stalter. She's the Assistant State's Attorney. Is she here? If not, we'll call the vote.
She's here. She's here.
She's here, but you know what? So the people know what this is about. Can you come up real quick and just?
There's, there's a motion on the floor. Can we vote on the motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Just, just to approve, let them come up.
Just to bring it up.
To bring it up.
Okay. Okay.
This, this is a motion.
All the, well, is, is it an individual vote, or?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes?
Yes, it's a voice vote. No?
Voice vote.
It should be.
Corporation Council, what is it? It's a roll call.
Yeah.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Very well.
The motion now before the body.
Now, if, would you mind coming up, the Assistant State's Attorney, Lake County, Lyle Staller? If you can, okay.
Do you want to, or do you?
I would happy to. Is there any information that you need?
Does everyone here know what this is all about?
I'd be happy to talk to it, as the committee chairperson.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Thank you.
All right. Alderman Lisa May.
I'm going to make the motion, because that's what we need to do next, correct?
Correct, right.
All right. The Judiciary, Judiciary Committee recommends.
Make the motion in a second.
We made a motion to move it up on the agenda, correct?
Right.
And now I'm going to make the motion to vote on the item.
Absolutely. Is there a second?
I'm going to make the motion.
After she read it.
The Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the agreement as presented, establishing parameters for the building grounds at 2400 Belvedere Road, and I so move.
Very well. Motion by Alderman Lisa May, second by Alderman Valco. And this is a voice vote?
No, roll call.
Roll call.
Roll call. May we speak to the discussion? Yeah. I'd like to speak to the ordinance, if I may.
Okay, very well.
Historical ordinance is a voluntary ordinance, which, and we have a, a group of people that are appointed by the mayor to look for the city for historical, significant buildings. And I think over the past years, Harry Kane's one of the leaders in that, we've preserved some very, very important buildings in our community, and they were able to continue. A lady in my ward asked that the TB sanatorium, which in its heyday was one of the leaders in combating tuberculosis, TB, and it's right there on Belvedere at the TB san, and that's why we have this ordinance, to preserve it. But it was done on a voluntary basis. I, as an alderman, I would not want somebody coming to me and say, "You have to do it." Show me why I should do it, what's the consequences if we don't do it, and why we should do it. And I think that's, they've worked back and forth through Lisa, through the mayor, and we've come up with an ordinance that is very. It's an intergovernmental agreement, not an ordinance. For, for both of us. So it's an agreement which is going to be followed, and I, I take my hats off to the county and the county board, and to the mayor and Lisa, for working through this, but on a voluntary basis. I think the word voluntary is very important, that we don't get something rammed down our throats like some people would do, but you can see the need for it and why we should do it. So I, I will support it full heartedly, and I do like the Historical Committee, but they really get pretty aggressive sometimes, and I think they need some reins on them sometimes to make people understand why it's important to do it, not just, "We said it should be done." And I think that's what's happened. The county board realizes, yes, it should be done. And thank you for, you've done it, Lisa, you've done it. Great job bringing everybody together, because they're pretty far apart at one time. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman May, do you have anything else to say about?
The credit goes to the county and to our staff. But thank you, Alderman Tempest.
Very well. So we have the motion on the floor. Roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Okay, very well. Let's go back to the top of the committee reports and motions. Labor Relations, Alderman Greg Moiseo.
We have one item. Thank you, Chairman. Item A, approval of collective bargaining agreement between the city of Waukegan and the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 150 Public Employees Division for 2012 through 2017, and I so move.
Well, we have a motion by Alderman Moiseo, second by Alderman Newsom. I have a question, you know, I just want to make a comment in regards to the, the way the negotiations were handled between the city and the, and the collective bargaining agreement. It was a very fair negotiations. I give both sides credit for coming to a, a pretty quick agreement. So with that said and done, let's have a roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Chairman Moiseo, for the work. Now, the next item is the Insurance Committee. Co-chair Alderman Beedling.
Recommendation to approve renewal of health, dental, and life insurance policies for plan year June 1st, 2012 through May 31st, 2013, and I so move.
We have a motion by Alderman Beedling, and I have a second by Alderman Lisa May. Before I, I want to make a comment on this, too. I want to comment that our representatives, Globe, from Globe, Jonathan Crass, Lawrence Marx, and also Kirk Schmitty, you guys did an excellent job in reducing, you know, the rates. It's huge savings to the city of Waukegan. You're looking at last year, which was at, what, 12.6%? And it went down, all the way down to 4.6%. That's a huge savings. So a job well done. Thank you very much for that. Roll call, please. Unless there's any other questions by the alderman?
No.
Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Next item is the Public Safety Committee. And that is Alderman Tom Conkin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have four items at the Public Safety Committee. The Waukegan Police Department received a request to restrict left turns from Washington Street, both westbound and eastbound, onto Jackson Street between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. They are currently in place between 2:00 and 4:00. So this would also include no left turns when school opens and when school closes. The request is made because of the increased pedestrian and vehicular traffic from the high school. And the Police Department researched the request and found that restricting left turns would alleviate pedestrian and vehicular conflicts and would alleviate a lot of congestion on school days. I would like to make a motion to change the, the motion. As presented to, because the ordinance is already written.
Correct.
So I'd like to change it from a motion to have the Corporation Council draft an ordinance to a motion to adopt as presented.
So move. Motion by Alderman Tom Conkin, second by Alderman Tempest, and that is to amend the, the motion which states to draft, to adopt, the ordinance to reflect that left turns from Washington Street westbound and eastbound onto Jackson Street. Be prohibited on school days between the hours of 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Now, should we read the emotion?
In that regard?
The motion now, we'll read, if you could read it.
The motion in that regard, the Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move to adopt as presented an ordinance that reflects the left turns from Washington Street westbound and eastbound onto Jackson Street. Be prohibited on school days between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., and I so move.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Tom Conkin, second by Alderman Harold Beedling. Roll call, please. Or actually, a voice vote.
Roll call.
No, it's an ordinance. It's an, okay, roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Item B, the Waukegan Police Department respectfully requests approval to accept the COPS grant and begin the process of rehiring eight officers. In October of 2010, the Waukegan Police Department was awarded a grant from the Department of Justice, Community Oriented Policing Services. The following, this grant allows for the Police Department to recall laid-off officers, those other officers the Waukegan Police Department lost in its layoffs in 2011. So the Public Safety Committee recommends an ISO move that we adopt, accept the CHP grant.
We have a motion by Alderman Tom Conkin, second by Alderman Tempest, to accept the CHP grant. Roll call, please. We have any questions? Alderman Beedling, please.
I, I'd like to remind the public that we're still in a deficit position in the city, and I'm all for this grant, but it depends on a lot of things if we keep it for the term or not. It depends on what comes down the road, so I'd like to keep it for the entire four years, but we'll see. Thank you.
I'd just like to comment on this also, just to let everyone know that this grant is to get those officers back with, the federal government would pay for these officers for the first three years, and the city of Waukegan would be required to maintain these numbers for the fourth year. This is a situation where we do want our officers, and we do want all our officers to be safely patrolling the city streets. But this is a situation where we're hoping that dollars don't get involved and we find ourselves in a position where we're not hurting in our fourth year. So I believe this will work out for us, and that's why I recommended it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alderman Conkin. Roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Item C, the Waukegan Fire Department respectfully requested permission to enter into an agreement to obtain five ZOL-E series cardiac monitors. The department has used the current monitors since 2002, and the expected life of the monitors is six to eight years. The department has been paying for a maintenance contract on the current monitors. Due to the advanced technology and a lack of parts for these monitors, the fire department needs to upgrade the monitors, and they can be maintained and repaired as, that can be maintained and repaired as needed. The fire department is only able to include one monitor for this fiscal year and one for the upcoming budget. But the police chief, or the fire chief, excuse me, has worked out an arrangement where we can probably get all five of these, so that's what we're recommending, so. The Public Safety Committee recommends, and I so move, to enter into an agreement to obtain five ZOL-E series cardiac monitors from the sole source manufacturer and pay P&amp;L Capital of 4131 South 143rd Circle, Omaha, Nebraska, 68137, in five annual payments of $17,832.21 from line item 100-3020-25472. I so move.
We have a motion by Alderman Tom Conkin, second by Alderman Valco. Roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conkin.
Aye.
Alderman Moiseo.
Aye.
Item D, we have a motion from the Waukegan, or the Waukegan Fire Department respectfully submitted information to be acted on for the Florida City Council, increase the ambulance fees. A notification to increase by the United States Department of Health and Human Services of a 2% for urban ambulances. So I have a motion to amend the city ambulance fee schedule to reflect the increase by the state, United States Department of Health and Human Services of 2%, and to reflect the changes as presented. I so move.
A motion by Alderman Tom Conkin, second by. A motion by Alderman Tom Conken, second by Alderman Moisio. Roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
We had one item for information-only discussion. We received, the Waukegan Police Department has received equitable sharing payments in the amount of $99,295.15 from the U.S. Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration. That was for information-only, and the check has been deposited, and I am complete.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good job. Next on the agenda is the Judiciary Committee. Alderman Lisa May, Chair.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The Judiciary Committee met on March 26, 2012. The first item on the agenda, the Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the application and ordinance as presented rezoning property at 31870 North Waukegan Road from R1 Single Family Residence to CR Conservation Recreation, and I so move.
We have a motion by Alderman Lisa May, second by Alderman Moisio. Are there any questions to the motion? Would you like to speak on that?
I'd be happy to speak on it.
Thank you.
This is a parcel of land. The
It's in the Ninth Ward.
Yeah, it's in the Ninth Ward, and there's one landlocked piece of property that the Liberty
Prairie Crossing?
No, it's, hang on, I gotta, Liberty Prairie Conservancy has finally taken ownership of, and it's the last remaining piece that's not CR. We've already zoned two other surrounding parcels the same way. They finally obtained this property. They, they were here a few weeks ago presenting the nature preserve to us. So this is just a landlocked piece of property that they finally were able to obtain, and so we need to rezone that as well.
Thank you. Is it a roll call? Roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
No.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Motion pass.
Next on the agenda, we have a motion to approve the amendment to the Waukegan sign ordinance as presented pursuant to the Illinois General Assembly's Public Act, which imposes limitations that municipalities may make on political signs, and I so move.
We have a motion by Alderman Lisa May, second by Alderman Tom Conken. Are there any questions to the motion?
What?
This is
Alderman Beedling. Yeah, Alderman Beedling, did you have a question?
Would you like me to just tell you what the change is, and then you can ask?
I appreciate it.
No problem.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. What was, this is to bring us in alignment with the State of Illinois's right law on political signs, and actually, we don't have the capacity as home rule to supersede their jurisdiction. But what the change is, is that political signs on residential property no longer have the 60-day restriction. So we used to have a restriction in our ordinance that said you can't erect political signs on private property prior to 60 days before the voting date. The state took that away, so we're just fixing our ordinance to align with the state regulations. So now there is no time restriction on residential political signs.
Thank you.
And it does remain, though, for commercial properties, they still have the 60-day time limit prior to and need to be taken down four days after. And that was a significant change to this ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio. Motion pass.
Aye.
The only other item was a discussion item at the last city council meeting. It was, there was discussion about audience time and the three-minute rule, and it was referred to Judiciary Committee for discussion. We had a brief discussion.
Do we have item C? Do you have item C there?
Oh, I apologize.
That's okay.
I'm getting ahead of myself. Okay, yeah, I do.
Okay.
My apologies.
Yes, no problem.
Okay. Judiciary Committee recommends to approve the ordinance as presented amending Section 21-19 of the City Code regarding penalties, and I so move.
A motion by Alderman May, second by Alderman Newsom. Are there any questions to the motion? What, do you want to explain a little bit?
If anyone has questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, we can take a vote.
Very well. Roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Very well, motion pass. Now you can go ahead and continue.
Okay, I apologize.
That's all right.
Our discussion item at Judiciary Committee had to do with the three-minute audience time rule. It was referred to Committee for Discussion. We felt there's already an existing ordinance that says that during the public comment portion of the city council meetings, if any, all public comments are limited to three minutes per individual. Individuals are directed to be brief and concise in making their remarks and to address topics directly relevant to business of the city council. We want to be very clear that we are, we encourage resident involvement, and we do, we aren't in any way trying to stifle negative, positive, neutral remarks. But as we've seen at recent city council meetings, it can get out of hand, and some people go for 10 minutes, some people go for 30 seconds. So it's our wish to continue and to enforce the three-minute rule. If there's an organization or, you know, someone who has a presentation that they'd like to make that's longer than three minutes, then they can contact the city and make arrangements to be put on the agenda as official presentation. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Alderman Lisa May, for your work. Next, and the item on the agenda is old business. We have none. Reports and communications, we have none. New business and recommended actions by Corporation Council. Item A. Approval of payroll dated March 21st, 2012 in the amount of $1,269,197.57. We have a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest. Roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Item B. Approval of bills dated March 2nd, 2012 in the amount of $1,603,61.62. Is there a typo here in terms of?
March 2nd.
It's dated March 2nd. It should be April 2nd, shouldn't it? Joan? Okay. So
I'll amend that.
Amend that, please, to April 2nd?
Yes.
We have a motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Tempest. A roll call, please. Alderman Beedling.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Tempest.
Aye.
Alderman May.
Aye.
Alderman Valco.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Conken.
Aye.
Alderman Moisio.
Aye.
Motion pass. Item C. Approval of the annual appropriation ordinance of the City of Waukegan, Illinois for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2012, and ending April 30th, 2013.
Make a motion to table that, please.
Now, we could, you want to table it?
Yes.
Okay, any discussion?
We, I mean, we can, but I want to table it.
Want to just hold it over?
Hold it over means it's coming up the next time. Table means we can bring it back.
Just to let everyone know here
Hold it over, it comes right up to the next meeting.
But that, we might not be ready the next time. Table means we don't, if we hold it over, we got to vote the next council meeting, correct?
Well, we got to pass it the next council meeting anyway.
Well, it has to be passed before the end of the month, correct?
No. Absolutely not.
Please, come on up. This is our city, city finance director.
It would be nice if we did.
Yeah.
From a practical standpoint, we prefer to have the appropriation approved before the fiscal year starts. But legally, the city can go without an appropriation for up to 90 days once the fiscal year begins.
Which is
Which is, the 90 days would be
End of July.
End of July.
Or May to July.
If that's the case, then we will have to do a rollover appropriation of the current year every month until you pass the new appropriation.
Alderman Tempest.
May I speak to that? I've been here a long time, but I think we ought to be able to get it passed before the end there because we've had more information on appropriation ordinance than I've ever seen before, really. And Tina, you've done a good job. I do have concerns about the $10 million bond, and I do have an amendment to take that out. But if you're going to hold it over, fine, but we ought to try, the book she laid out here is really excellent. It shows, there's no new positions. It shows what we had last year, the year before, and it's all laid out there.
Excellent.
The clearest I've ever seen it.
Right.
And
How long you been here, Coach?
I commend you, Tina, for the job you're doing on it. I'm not trying to make you, but you're not getting a raise.
It was my driver's ed instruction in high school.
Was it? Well, he was a good guy.
Put it right over the top.
He was a good guy.
Chairman? Tina, I have a question to her as well.
Let's hold over one time and come up next time. I think everybody reads this book.
One of my questions, and I believe I discussed it a little bit with the, with the Finance Department. It was the 10 million, again, which is the Secure Community Initiative bond. You know, I see that it's a wonderful idea. It seems like there needs to be a lot of planning to this still. But my take on this is, what is the priority here in this community right now? You know, besides especially of public safety, which we addressed a little bit with the CH grant. But I think our priorities are, you know, roads. You know, all of our roads, we've been neglecting our roads for the past, you know, eight, well, for quite a while. These roads, the infrastructure on these roads, they're getting pretty bad. Now, my opinion, I would support 10 million bond going into something like that rather than this Secure Community Initiative bond, but that's only my opinion. You know, I think the taxpayers of this community would definitely, you know, see their taxes, you know, going to where it really should go, and that's, you know, like I said, these roads. So that's just my opinion on this, sir.
I do have a motion prepared to take the $10 million out of the present appropriation.
Chairman?
Why don't, will we table it right now?
Chairman, hold on.
So, go ahead, Alderman Moisio.
A couple of things.
Has been a motion to do that.
Table, hold over, I mean, hold over, if we hold it over, it comes up the next meeting, it has to be voted on. We've put ourselves in a box a little bit, I think. If we table it, it can be brought up. You get more time? Am I correct on that?
If you, if you hold it over and automatically goes on to the next agenda. On that next agenda, you can either table it, motion to continue it, or vote on it.
Okay.
If you table it, then at any meeting, you can motion it up to be heard. It doesn't automatically go on to the next agenda. You can put it on the next agenda if you so wish.
Right.
If you motion to continue it, you can continue it to a specific date. So if you know you don't want it on the next meeting, you can motion to continue it for the first meeting in May, for example.
Right.
So those are your three options. But just for holding it over does not require you to pass it at the next council meeting.
Then it doesn't make, it's indifferent to me on how we do it, but a couple of points I want to make. We always get caught up in that budget process, but this is the most important thing we do. This, by law, allows us to spend that amount of money. If we didn't do this, we couldn't spend any money. So this is, everybody gets caught up in that budget mess. Oh, the budget, oh, the budget, oh, the budget. The budget is just what we want to spend it on. We could shift things around. You can change the budget all you want. But the appropriation ordinance is the most important thing we do up here. Because that, by law, allows us to spend that money. If we don't pass it, we can't spend it. A little history lesson, right, Alderman Tempest?
But we still have to pass, but what's most important is passing the bonds to make sure that we, you know, have the money to spend in the appropriation, whatever we appropriated. So we can always say no to the, you know, say yes to the appropriations. But, you know, we can also say no to the bond too as well.
Coach, and one more, one more thing. The mayor is not here. This is obviously, the budget and the appropriation ordinance comes from the mayor. I think we should at least let him be, come back and at least explain what he wants with that Safe for Grants Initiative, Coach. I know you're not hot on it. I just want to hear his explanation on it. That's all. I want to give time, time to do that before you take it out, and if his explanation is not sufficient, I'm sort of leaning to what your thought is on it.
Right.
But if your agreement, if it's not sufficient, then I think if we go with it now, Coach, we might argue about it, and the guy that wants it's not here to
Right.
To defend whether, why he wants it.
I agree with you, Alderman, and I'd like to see his explanation on the, hear the explanation on the $10 million Secure Community Initiative bond.
That's the one that Alderman Tempest is, I think, talking about, right, Coach?
Yeah, Secure Community.
Okay, very well. Are there any other questions? So right now, we have it tabled.
Tabled.
Very well. Are there any other questions to that? Thank you, Tina.
Need a motion or table?
Or hold over?
I don't, I don't know if we need a motion table.
Yeah, it's a table or hold over.
Once, once an Alderman tables it.
Have to hold it over.
Well, then we'll hold it over. It doesn't make a difference to me.
Why vote on it next time? The mayor and I might not be your next.
You want to hold it or table?
Hold it over.
Hold it over, then.
Okay. Got it held over.
You don't need to
Right. I think that's the right Roberts Rule of Order to table anyways.
Whatever.
That's appropriate. All right, very well.
It's been held over or?
It's held over. It's held over, Alderman. Okay, very well. The next item on the agenda is to request permission for the Waukegan Homer Derenger Post Number 281 to sell poppies to support veterans during the month of May 2012. We have a motion by Alderman Tom Conken, and second by Alderman Larry Tempest. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very well. Ordinances and resolutions, we have none. Alderman's time. Who do we begin with, Mr. Clerk? Who do we begin with, Mr. Clerk?
Alderman Beedling.
Alderman Beedling.
I don't have much to say. Regarding the library, I, I found, apparently it was on Sixty Minutes, but I read it in a, an article on, on my computer, about Khan Academy. It's spelled K-H-A-N-A-C-A-D-E-M-Y dot org. I wasn't the best student when I was in high school, so I checked this site out and apparently the man that created this site is very, very good at mathematics and what I found, he's a very, very good teacher. I, I logged on to the site about seven PM on a Sunday evening after reading the article about it and I was sitting at my computer till four AM in the morning. It's, it's addicting. You get on the thing and it's very organized. He has algebra, geometry, trigonometry, calculus, biology, physics, art and history. You could basically get a college degree from this. And to me, the, the advantage is, he, he has a YouTube video, ten to twelve minutes long, and he apparently has like a paint program with his cursor and he draws pictures with the math is all about and then you have to, after the video's over, you have to answer a series of questions. Once you get enough questions in order, you go on to the next lesson. If you make a mistake, that blue bar goes back to maybe halfway and it's learning by rote. And to me, I, I had difficulty when I got up to adding and subtracting negative numbers. It, it, it was a tough lesson to learn. I probably spent close to an hour on that because I'd get close to closing it out and then I'd make a stupid mistake. But after a while, you, you get to memorize things and I found it really helpful. I think I've done twenty-five or thirty sessions on it so far. If you log on, they'll, they'll track your progress, so every time you go back, you can pick up where you left off. He has, I spent about, I want to say three hours. He, we're all concerned about our economy and what's happened in housing and everything. He has a series of videos explaining, it's called Housing Price Conundrum. He'll explain what happened in housing, why, real estate values inflated, what caused that. He has a series of videos on bank bailouts. Anybody want to learn about the bank bailouts and how destructive they've been? And he also explains credit default swaps. There's a lot of information on this site. I, I urge everyone to pass it around. I'd, I'd like to see our school district get every, every child in the school on this site, especially if they're struggling in math. I, I think any child could end up being ahead of the game in school, in, in class. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Beedling.
Alderman Newsom.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have one question for our Corporation Council. I know we had the resident that came up regarding the dogs. Are we working on that ordinance regarding, or amending something regarding the dogs being loose and, because I've had some calls where there have been animals roaming and coming from over on another block and almost attacking other people's dogs and things like that. So are we working on an amendment? I know...
Anna Finn has been working diligently with the police department prior to the complaint for a lengthy period of time to address the entire animal code. If you want more specifics on which...
Do you know where we are with that? Is it almost ready? Is it going to be a while? Okay. The next judiciary? Okay. That wouldn't be my question. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Alderman.
Alderman Tempest.
Speaking of animals, I was out to the animal shelter today. What a well-run facility Waukegan has. I don't think some people realize that we do have a animal shelter out on McCree Road. Susan runs it. It's run by three staff members and what a wonderful facility and how well it's one. And they got the volunteers and I think you can help me on that. What's the name of that volunteer room?
Waukegan Animals Getting Saved are WAGs.
WAGs. And it's really been a, a blessing for the city too. They've raised money and, and food and it's cut our costs down dramatically in running the shelter. But Waukegan, I, I heard some terrible stories about North Chicago Animal Shelter and Waukegan ought to be proud of, of how, with this direction of Susan there, how well our animal shelter is run. It, it's really amazing to see those poor little guys locked up. In fact, I adopted my German Shepherd from there some years ago. He was one day from dog heaven. His ears were all burnt. His tail was a rat tail from, from the flies eating it. His back paw was all burnt and they were going to give him to me. I said, "Oh, no, we do it the right way." I adopted him properly, took him down to the animal shelter. He had heartworm, so we treated him for that and had him, poor guy got neutered, but that's the way it goes. Well, they say that's good for your pets. I don't know, but, but what a, what a wonderful dog and I was able to save a life and those pets are so, if you've ever been out there, go visit sometime, you can see them from outside. And you can support that organization through, help me again, they're WAGs?
WAGs. Just stop by our office.
And you meet sometimes on, when do you meet?
We meet the first Wednesday of every month, so we'll be meeting in two days.
Two days, at Finn's office.
At the Finn's office.
Give me an address, please.
One-twenty-eight Northwest Street, Waukegan, Illinois.
For all you animal lovers that want to help, we sure would appreciate it.
Bring your checkbook. And we're officially five-oh-one-C-three, so it's tax deductible.
So if you give some money, it counts.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'd love to also mention, Larry, that we're also doing a fundraiser, May sixth, at Fat Man's, twenty-five-hundred motorcycles. All the proceeds and money will go to WAGs. Last week, we, in the last two months, we've got about fifteen-thousand pounds of dog food and cat food for the shelter, so it's working very well.
Tremendous. Thank you.
Next is Alderman May.
There's a basketball game on, isn't there?
Yeah, somebody said there was.
Had a wrestling match, that's okay.
Violet's not here, so I'll just make a quick announcement that our Main Street's next Art Walk event is April twenty-first, the third Saturday of every month, downtown Waukegan's Hoppin'. Come on down, check us out. I also would like to thank Fist, the former inmate group, and David Motley has a group called the Waukegants and they've been taking to our ravines lately and a couple Sundays ago, for hours, these guys cleaned up the ravine and the bluff that is just beyond the Pace Bus Hub on Sheridan Road. And I know I forwarded the pictures to all the Aldermen and some city staff, but the amount of garbage that these gentlemen and young ladies picked up on Sunday morning was incredible and I just think that we need to consider that with some of the decisions that are before us with the reconfiguration of the Pace Hub. But mostly, I want to thank the volunteers in this community who keep stepping up and donating their time to really just pick up trash. This Saturday, April seventh, there's a group called Uniting America and they're cleaning up Roosevelt Park from ten to one. That's April seventh. You're welcome to join them. Friends of Waukegan Beach is gearing up for their summer cleanups season and I will forward more dates for beach cleanups in, in the future, but I just want to say thank you to all these people who give, give up their time to clean up our city. Thank you.
Alderman Valco.
I believe most, if not all, the Aldermen are aware that the, the government is going